Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is January 3rd, 2024, 6:04 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Joe Schein.
Here.
Yes, Charlton.
Ms. Charlton did get ahold of us just a few minutes ago and let us know that she is resigning her position as of today. She will not be attending.
Jason, Jason Daley.
Present.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Present.
Of course. Hold your legions.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. The water system, Lewis County Commissioners, did approve our request for a two-year extension. And so we have two more years to get all those things in order so we can receive the water system back. More to come on that. Annexation update, so this will be for the five parcels. Three of them are park properties and two of them are the wholesome properties up on the hill that I want to be part of bringing them into the city limits. The boundary review board with the county has their noticing period right now. It will expire on January 29th, so we're just running through the motions to finish up that paperwork. Permitting, city staff is investigating different options for offering online building permit applications. So we had a demo for a particular company that does offer some online type options. And they were able to give, show us their method for doing building permits in a matter of seconds, and it takes us
Days.
much, much, much longer to do that. Various scanning and emailing and filing of the paperwork. So that could be an interesting prospect to investigate some more. More to come on that. And then, of course, like I just said, Ms. Charlton did resign her city council position just a few minutes ago. So council members be thinking about who you would like to nominate and then maybe eventually appoint to her position. Oaths of office. Both myself, Mr. Parsons and Mr. Ferguson won elections this November, and so as of the new year, it's time for another swearing in. I'll go first.
There.
Winner's circle.
So.
Repeat after me.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
and laws of the United States.
and laws of the United States.
in the state of Washington.
in the state of Washington.
and I will faithfully.
and I will faithfully.
impartially.
and impartially.
perform and discharge the duties.
perform and discharge the duties.
of the office of.
of the office of.
city of Vader.
city of Vader.
mayor for your term.
mayor for your term.
according to law and the best of my ability.
according to law and the best of my ability. We got those in?
Not at all. And I'm standing in front of the mayor for half an hour.
He's Parsons.
I wasn't ready.
Been there a couple times.
For you. What are you talking about?
Raise your right hand. I, Mike Parsons.
I, Mike Parsons.
do solemnly swear.
do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and laws of the state of Washington.
and laws of the state of Washington.
and the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
and the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
and that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
and discharge the duties of the city council.
discharge the duties of the city council.
of the city of Vader.
of the city of Vader.
according to law and the best of my ability.
according to law and the best of my ability.
So I'm going.
So I'm going.
Like number two.
Take the money out of it.
I, Michael Ferguson.
I, Michael Ferguson.
do solemnly swear.
do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution and laws.
that I will support the Constitution and laws.
of the state of Washington.
of the state of Washington.
and the Constitution and laws.
and the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
the duties of the city council of the city of Vader.
the duties of the city council of the city of Vader.
according to law and the best of my ability.
according to law and the best of my ability.
So I'm going.
So I'm going.
Council reports, and members of the councils have anything to report? Right, agenda approval, I do not have any changes to be attended.
I have a question, Joe.
Yeah.
Last meeting, we talked about, it wasn't really a meeting, we were just all here. We talked about moving the public comment up above city business. So y'all have time to comment on what we're gonna vote on before we vote on it, kind of thing.
Right.
I just noticed it's still down here.
Yep, that was something that we were gonna do. Would you like to move it right, would you like to do it first, before city business?
Before city business, yeah, that, I think that was on the plan.
Make, we can approve the agenda with the moving of public comment to before city business?
Yes.
I'll second that.
I didn't hear a just need a motion, regular agenda stuff.
Oh. Did you just put your public permit, you got one now, for city business?
The motion by Mr. Hall to approve the agenda with the moving of public comment before city business, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. person, any other discussion? There are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Minutes approval.
I make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for December 6th, 2023, and for December 20th, 2023.
I motion my Mr. Parsons to approve the minutes for the 6th and the 20th, do we have a second?
One second.
I'd like to run Mr. Daley, discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve vouchers for the extended December of 2023 for $38,437.38.
Motion by Mr. Daley to approve the vouchers as stated, is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to have Mr. Ferguson, discussion? There are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening.
Hello.
Who you live, happy new year.
Law enforcement totals for the month of December 2023. During December, there were over 186 citizen counts. All called to service, we wish for a deputy with dedicated to the city of Vader. Five Catholic stops resulting in two infractions and two criminal citations. And one felony eluding that was arrested in Calhoun County.
Ooh.
And so.
They flee down the west side?
Yeah. From the spike down there, yeah.
Wow.
For 1A Street.
From here?
From here, that's why I said that's.
They spiked them down there?
Yeah.
They didn't get them in the ditch?
It's dangerous.
We can all hope. I'm sorry, that was politically incorrect. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it end of A Street?
I believe it was A Street, yeah.
Okay.
So does that?
What does it mean?
There's a question, so he was arrested.
Yeah.
Does that fall under us? Or does that fall under? Was, is he considered arrested in Vader? So if we did not have you, is that one that we would have been paying for, for his housing?
To have, the initial crime eluding occurred here. So you would have that, he was also arrested, well, somebody else in the car was also arrested on warrants. And then you may have had additional crimes that occurred in Calhoun County. At their, you know, their, so they would have, literally, he could potentially have, be having charges from Vader and charges from whatever happened in Calhoun County before he was actually apprehended.
Okay, so would, would that have been on our bill? Or would that have been on Calhoun County bill because that's where it happened? Or do they split those?
Where the one that had the crime occurred up here.
Okay.
And this was the probable cause of this, it was a Vader incident.
Okay.
If you had, I mean, just like a Vader officer, you know, ever done this, it would be the same thing, even a Vader event.
Okay.
That's, that stuff's on top of... So was he a felon before he eluded?
That was the passenger.
Okay. Fun stuff.
I think he became a
I was like, wow, there's an action.
Eluding doesn't indicate that by eluding, that eluding is a
That was great.
I got you.
So, okay. Well, it's such a bad day all around, that was on the record. All right, public comment, members of the public have anything to comment before we move on to city business?
Yeah, I have a question about personnel.
Sure, Bob.
Is this being rewrote so that you can hire council members to do the work in Vader without going the bid process? Thanks.
No, there's, there's been no changes or updates to the employee policy that has anything to do with that whatsoever. Pretty much, it's all centers around sick time vacation, the way the city does payroll processing, we use a ADP for our payroll processing versus doing it in-house. That's, that's pretty much, there's several different updates, but it's all, it all centers around those three items for the most part. Anything else that you may have seen in the policy has already existed for a number of years.
The employee policy?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll give the changes to you, and you can take them home so we can actually see. A lot of them are just like wording, wording changes, things like that, so.
Yeah, it's just a lot of housekeeping stuff, mostly, and a lot in that. So, any other members of the public have any comments before we continue? Okay, moving on to item number one of city business, council select mayor pro temp for the 2024-2025 biennium. It's a two-year position by our municipal code. Mr. Parsons has been doing a wonderful job the last couple of years. But it is time to elect a new member.
I'm gonna look my I'll second that. Very slight.
High praise, Mr. Parsons.
I
Is this time for me to say yes or no?
Appreciate it.
I don't know.
For me?
I know, I know that Mike is, I know that Mike is gone a lot during the summer.
I travel a lot.
And he's traveling, I, I don't mind doing it at all, I have my schedule cleared out for Wednesday, I think, so that as long as it's scripted, because I'm not very good in front of people. And I don't do computers.
All right.
Is all right? Darn it, I thought that'd be the, nope, yeah.
Is that a, is it a nomination in route? Yeah, first and a second, that works.
So I nominate
Yeah. Well, you can't nominate.
Yeah, obviously, he doesn't wanna do it.
Well, my thing is, I didn't mind doing it, it wasn't anything, but I'm always
He's gone during the
Gone, and it's harder to do it when you're on the phone.
That's generally when I need the assistance.
Yeah.
Yeah, that scouts us.
Okay. If it's all right with you guys, I'm okay with it. I casted up last time, and I'm, I'm, I'll be okay this time.
I sit right here, so if he, he's out, I can, yeah. I'm good together.
All right, can I get a first motion and a second on Mr. Daley?
I'll motion that we nominate Joe, or Jason Daley.
We want a motion by
I'm looking at Joe.
That's all right, motion by Mr. Parsons to nominate Mr. Daley as mayor pro temp. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second to Mr. Hall? All right, all those in favor of Jason Daley being mayor pro temp for the 2024-2025 biennium, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I get the votes?
Any opposed? Motion carries. Excellent, thank you. It's exciting. Thanks, Jason.
Man, I'm gonna have to change all my business, sorry, Mike, Mike was starting this.
All your business perks.
Yeah.
The prestige.
Change on
All right, item number two, council to consider ordinance 2024-01. The 2024 city council meeting schedule, if we take a look at that, it's just similar to what we did last year. A list of Wednesday nights where we will have council.
I'm looking through them. I motion that we approve ordinance 2024-1, 2024 city council meeting schedule.
A motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve ordinance 2024-01, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons.
Wait a minute, there's that one Wednesday in October that I'm not able to go, we should just joke again.
Time to speak up.
Nope, things are great.
I will say that after second month, there is February 14th.
Valentine's Day?
We all have plans.
I'm saying Victoria's not here, so you're the only one that has to ask.
I can always talk to dinner after the meeting.
Let's hear it, well.
Everything on Valentine's Day happens during dinnertime or after dinnertime, so.
Every day is Valentine's, I just stay at my house.
We can endeavor to have a, a short meeting.
And there you go.
Any other discussion on the 2024-01? All those in favor of ordinance 2024-01, the city council meeting schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Council to consider ordinance 2024-02, the Vader employee personnel policy, as I kind of summarized a little bit ago. For the most part, it's just housekeeping things related to our change to an outside payroll processing company in the way they apply, do pay dates, how we now have direct deposit. So hopefully you've seen that, the summary sheet that
Yeah.
That's kind of a bit quick, so I can run over it real quick.
I read the
Sick leave, we changed, we changed the availability from 12 months from beginning employment to six months. But that's actually vacation.
See, it says on here, it says accumulating at the start of employment, it doesn't say at six months.
At the bottom one?
Yeah.
The one above the bottom one, yeah.
So, yeah, so vacation would start accumulating immediately upon employment. However, you wouldn't be able to use vacation until after your probationary period unless you had supervisor authority.
Okay.
So that way, as soon as they're done with the probation, they have some vacation to utilize.
Right.
So that's about added language for overtime and what is not included, added clarification that the meal break is 30 minutes. Changed the annual review period, instead of doing it on the person's anniversary date of hire, we do, we do them all at the new year, that's actually what we're doing already. So it's just a lining up the policy with what the city is actually doing. Added language for the ADP payroll processing. Instead of, in the reimbursement of travel section, instead of actually having the dollar amounts listed, it just refers to the state table. The state has a table that where they update that, so we would just use the state table. Let's see, benefits upon hire, so yeah, health insurance is available the first day of the first month after hiring, instead of waiting after, instead of 90 days, is what our health insurance company already, already does. And then the big, the big one is adding teeth as a city holiday, as the trend, the government trend is.
The paid holiday, none of that. We didn't change it.
And so, and then, yeah. But we don't have to.
We don't have to make that a paid holiday if we don't want to?
I don't think so, we don't have to.
Well, no, if I have the choice, I ain't gonna do it where I work. Shoot, teeth, what day is that anyway, is that?
It is, it's a federal holiday, but I don't think, it doesn't have to be a mandatory.
Cause I'm just confused.
The federal holiday in Columbus Day is a
What is Juneteenth Park?
So do you guys, right now, do you guys get Columbus Day? No? Can we make this Columbus Day holiday?
It's on the same day.
Do what?
No.
Columbus Day, is that what you're
I'm voting the holiday.
Hold on, Bob, the council's talking, please.
The, instead of Juneteenth holiday, make the Columbus Day a holiday.
In place of it?
Yeah.
I don't know, what's Juneteenth represent? Or what's it for? You might even hear it, or what?
People, when slaves in Texas realized about the emancipation, when they, when they heard about it, for something along
Oh.
Yes.
I wanna say when they, when they first realized that the, about the emancipation of
Right.
I didn't know it was becoming a federal holiday.
It was initially put Juneteenth in there and Columbus Day, and then there was some other discussion about using Columbus Day as a floater day. So that's why Columbus Day isn't on that list. Cause it's not required.
Ideas that it would
Juneteenth is a better
Yeah, we keep the office open, we keep the office open for Columbus Day, and people would get an extra floating holiday if they wanted to take it off.
Really, it's, it's not that big of a deal. I don't wanna get sued or something.
All right.
It's a federal holiday, let's recognize it.
Yeah, it's a federal holiday, I, I think, I think
Yeah. I literally read this Everybody did it.
The floater dates went up by one day to include Columbus Day. So we, it was kind of either we do a floater day or put Columbus Day on our schedule.
Yeah.
That's up to you, whether, which way you wanna go.
So I'm, I'm for the, yes, on the federal holiday for the 10th, and floater for the Columbus Day. Is that what we're voting on?
That's, that's how the, the draft that you've been presented is written already.
Yeah, it's a portion of it. That was just the last part of it that he was reading to us, the changes.
We don't have to change it.
We don't.
We don't.
We just leave it the way it is.
Good. Then you'll have everyone screaming for their Juneteenth, Juneteenth.
I mean, there really isn't, the modifications are pretty insignificant. To end, as far as what I can see. I read through the whole thing.
Emotions?
I motion that we support our Juneteenth holiday.
No, it's the ordinance, oh, we gotta, our employee personnel policy is what we're, we're on right now.
The update would include
Item three. Oh, okay.
By supporting the ordinance, the draft that I've written.
I wanna make a motion that we, that we support the ordinance 2024-01 for the 2024-02 for the city employee policy.
We motion my Mr. Daley to approve ordinance 2024-02 for the Vader blade policy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Goff, you had a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to know about the floater. Floater day, how the, how the
How they work?
Yeah, you get all those other days off plus the five floater days. So you're getting 17 days off. About 15 for
Right, they, they, they get the, all the government holidays off, and then there's several, is it five, five floaters now with the, with the Columbus Day, it's four. Yeah, four floating holidays with the, with the update that are just vacation days that they can use whenever they want.
I make nine. 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 Five.
All the government holidays? Are you adding the government holidays with the floating holidays? And as a contractor, all the government holidays come in.
I don't give holidays.
Columbus Day, right.
Every day's a day, you know?
But Columbus Day is one of 11 federal holidays.
I'm south of the Pines in Columbus.
It's not a, it's not a holiday in Washington.
Yeah.
Or Oregon.
Of course it's not.
Not gonna.
Aye.
All right, so there's first and a second, more discussion on, on this?
Is there a do we ask for a fiscal impact evaluation? For pay, pay the clerk to figure all that out? Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I mean, there's, there's, there's two ways, it's a yes or a no, do you, do you wanna approve another holiday and another floater, pretty much?
And
That was, that, the, yeah, having the floater be in place of Columbus Day was I didn't want to necessarily add another day where the office is closed, and so, but I didn't want the employees to not necessarily get their, their holiday either. By adding a floater, they were able to take celebrate Columbus Day whenever they want. Not necessarily on Columbus Day, that was the thinking. But if they all wanted to take the day off, I guess, we could figure that out, but seems unlikely.
Yeah.
All those in favor of ordinance 2024-02 for the updates to the Vader employee policy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Was there a second?
Jason motion I seconded.
Resolution, council considered resolution oh one dash 2024, the 2024 Vader master fee schedule. So we've taken a look at the various copies these had to do business last year and updated our fee schedule appropriately. Losing money on, on various services that we provide. Most of them are in the building department, but we did cross compare those with our neighbors and other cities. And we're very comparable, if not less, with where other cities are at right now. Some of the, just kind of a, well, I'll talk about that after the, after this. Getting ahead of myself. Hopefully y'all got a chance to take a look at that. Again, it's just the same fee schedule with slightly increased prices. Now it's a little long. Our fee schedule's fairly long.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution zero one twenty four. Of resolution, okay. Zero one twenty four, the 2024 Vader master fee schedule.
Motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution oh one dash 2024 for the 2024 master fee schedule. Is there a second?
Second.
Second on Mr. Ferguson. One of the things that came out of the looking at this was animal control, in particular, the dog kennels. And so there's some it is, it is kind of confusing on what qualifies and so.
You mean like a shelter?
Well, so we have three different kennel, kennel licenses available. We have a hobby kennel, a
Depending on how many dogs.
Kennel and a breeding kennel. And if you look through our code, there's criteria for each of those. And so, for instance, for so our fee schedule, if you saw that, we have a license for dog one, a license for dog two, a license for dog three. And it says a kennel license is required for dog three and higher. And if you look at the, 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 what those, the three kennel options are, the hobby kennel, you can only have a maximum of three dogs and they all need to be spayed or neutered. And then, and you need to have your neighbors approve your kennel license. So everyone within 200 feet needs to approve it as well as the city council. That you're going to have a whole bunch of dogs. And the other two kennels also require that as well. Everyone, anyone that gets a a breeding kennel has to get with every approval within 200 feet and a boarding kennel is within 500 feet. Everyone has to buy off on it and it goes to city council. Also, to further limit your kennels, the boarding kennel is restricted to commercial zoning area and which is very little, right? It's out along the highway by the post office. And the, it would appear, this is a little bit of a gray area in the, in the code. It's not written very well. The breeding kennel, it states that it is a commercial activity, but it does not necessarily state that it must be in the commercial area. There are some areas, there are some things where, that need to be, that need to be addressed and be cleared up. I think we're going to be bringing those to you in the not too distant future so we can kind of get a better handle on, on what we want to do. In essence, the way our code is written right now, it kind of limits you to two dogs unless you have one of these kennel licenses. Three dogs in a residential area max, so.
Not limited on cats, though.
No, not on cats.
Thank you.
Anyway, so I, I would just kind of add, add homework in your spare time when you're laying in bed. Pull up the city code on the animal control and take a look at that. Think about the direction you want to go. But for now, we have those, have, we still, we still have those in, in the fee schedule with some kind of clarification notes next to them. So folks that looks at the fee schedule that says, oh, which one of these do I need? They can see, oh, well, this one's commercial area only. This one requires city council and neighbor approval and things like that. So it's already in the code, so we're just trying to do it, do, do right by what we have written right now. But it was written in 2006, which is not necessarily the dark ages, but it was before the current attorney that we have now. Can't have pigeons, by the way.
Did we, I was thinking about the pigs the other day.
I would like to make a, a motion that we approve resolution oh one, 2024, the Vader master fee schedule.
I think we had a first and a second already.
Oh, we did. Oh, good.
I was monologuing about animals and dogs. We love talking about animals in the city council here in Vader.
Yeah.
That's where the pot belly pig worked.
Oh, my God, I was just going to mention that.
Was there a I thought that there were. We're okay.
Only up to 200 pounds.
Swine, the swine is not a pot belly pig.
It has to be a certain breed of pot belly pig under, under 200 pounds.
It's a little pig's okay.
But if you've seen that pig, it's a big pig.
Looking at me when you said that.
Any other discussion on the master fee schedule? There are none. All those in favor of resolution oh one, 2024, the Vader master fee schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, last item, item of council business, council to consider resolution oh two, 2024, the inter-agency agreement with AOC authorizing execution of the agreement for funding Blake conviction, vacation and resentencing work. So hopefully you all saw the the explanation document about where this came from. So this came from the Washington, this, this is not our idea, it came to us. So the Washington State Supreme Court a few years ago issued a decision known as the Blake decision, which resulted in the court holding that drug possession laws in Washington were not constitutional. As a result of the Blake decision, agencies are required to seek court vacations of past drug possession convictions or resentencing of defendants for convictions that predate the Blake decision. So it, it, it goes on basically to say, because of this, the state allocated funds to the different courts around the state so that we could go about and vacate these these particular charges against folks. We don't have a court. Lewis County is our courts. So Vader is going to get a roughly $2,600 and we need to send it to Lewis County. And that's what this document does. It lets us take the 2,600 and that's Lewis County so that they can use it to vacate our portion of the drug convictions.
Motion that we approve the resolution zero two, 2024, inter-agency agreement with AOC authorizing execution agreement for funding Blake conviction, vacation and resentencing work.
Motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve resolution oh two, 2024. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Daley for their discussion. Comments? Dissatisfaction.
Dissatisfaction all the way across the board. How do we, how do we regulate a society without rules? You know, I mean, honestly.
They were bad rules.
Yeah, some of them were, some of them were. Still, I don't know. I, like, I called the sheriff because I got somebody with no mirrors and a license plates. You know, going and scoring meth down Alpine Park and on Mike's landscaping, you know, and I go to chase him up. They come right back, call the sheriff, he can't do anything. Call me thieves. He's had all this stuff stolen out, you know.
Well, now I know where to go to score some meth. Thanks, man.
Sorry. That was my little rant.
It's your time, Mike.
Let's end the meeting before I.
All right, if there's no other discussion on, on this, all those in favor of approving, approving resolution oh two, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Elected official comments.
Both sides.
Any members of the council have any comments tonight?
It was nice to see.
Here, I was like.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:44 PM. Thank you, everybody.